And I'm recording on this. It says three connected users. I want to hit start. This is on premise IPS. Is the mnemonic. We have to, uh, Laverne is the two week winner on this. She's.
Missed it.
Uh, it's on premise IPS. I've got a IAM similar command for AWS. I'm gonna talk about it one o'clock. Jim and I went over this, uh, last week. The big thing that we learned is if you, we were wanting to use Cloud Big Table, Cloud Big Table is expensive. So Firestore, I now understand the popularity of it. I also learned that Cloud Big Table, which is not this question, is based upon HBase from Apache, which is interesting. A lot of the services are, uh, wrappers around, they're managed microservices from other things. A container as a service. And like I said, there's no winners or losers to this, so don't worry. And it's not even fair that I'm doing it, but since we've only got three people, I'm playing along. But it is good for me because I, this is good practice. So don't, literally, there's no winners or losers. I may have gotten this one wrong. Let's see what the question, right answer is here. I'm curious, like you are. I thought it might have been a, just G-Cloud enable. And this is one that I'm not so sure of either. So it's builds submit. What was the, the other one was missing the project. Okay? I should put dollar signs in front of the commands there. Here I took time to draw their slides using scrolled handwriting on my iPad of what they kind of showed over time, all on one slide. Um, but it's basically just talking about, you know, this is the lab that we did three weeks ago. Well, I got that wrong. Not what I do. It's Google's Content Delivery Network. It returns cached content. Okay, I have to get cached. Is, uh, this is either C or D. Yeah. Nope. So you don't. Oh, I think it's this one. This is why we're, you know, we're going to be doing this again today. So that a lot of these things are literally, we're going to be doing again today in today's lab. It's, it's the second version.
They have an S on the word when they don't contain their.
Yep, yep. And I, I, I was going to pick C and then I picked D. Here you've got a problem where there is a S or no S. And since this is, yeah, B.
So this coordinates does not have an S on it.
Yeah, yeah. So that's what I'm saying. They got like things that are. Once again, yeah. From here forward, all of these are things that we're going to be redoing for today. Uh, just a pro tip, the, these are, this is true. These are, this was just like, these came up in the lab where it was like, if you have problems with a lab, do these things and to try to debug it. They really didn't explain what these commands did, other than what you see here. And just didn't have a lot of time to give a better refined question. Maybe later we'll take these commands and, and build better questions like, how do you show replica sets? Is that a Kube Control command or a G-Cloud command? So the thing here to remember is anytime you see the word pod, think Kube Control instead of G-Cloud. So that gets you a 50/50.
And you didn't need the word pod in here. Okay.
Yeah. Oh, and here's one of those. Is it, where is the, is it a plural or non-plural? Uh, we know it's, like, the, the word is using pod. He's talking about pods. So we know it's a Kube Control command. Orders, in this case, I think is the pod. So. I may have missed this one. To list exposed services, it might be B, but it also might be, yeah, it is B. And then, uh, this is from today's lab, this, the answer there about, you can actually add to it the actual pod. Maybe I'm talking out of my, um, left side of my mouth, but I think this is because you're scaling the size of the cluster. I think it's a. I thought it was going to be a G-Cloud, uh, thought it was going to be a G-Cloud command. Turns out it's a Kube command. Interesting. So he's talking a pod, so we know it's the two pod, the, it's one of the Kube Control commands. Now is it a set image or update? It's a set image. Okay. I got lucky on that one. This. And this is unfair because I literally wrote this like 20 minutes before the meeting started. And this is not even, this has nothing to do with GCP, but we do so much node that we need to start learning how to learn node. We did this last week. We're going to do it again this week. This one might be easy for you guys because he's saying, you want to deploy, you want to delete something. And we know that in this case, the things that we're deleting, it has to have a name, right? We know that monolith is the name of the pod. So like, there's no winners or losers, but this just gets us exposed to what we're doing. So we can think about how we're going to do this lab. All right. With that said, I'm going, so we saw that, uh, if, do you want to go back and look at the answers somehow? Or do you want to go ahead and do the lab?
Maybe the lab would be better.
Okay, lab would be better. Okay. So one last thing. So Jim, just to show you this, let me present this so you can see it. Can you see the presentation?
Yeah.
So last week, what we did is we did, we did this lab, which set up this thing. And basically he used Cloud Build to build a, an app that was written in Node.js for deployment to a cluster. And it was, we set up like three pod, we, it was like, we had one node, then we had three, and then we scaled it to five. And it was all the same pod. The only thing that changes between that lab and this lab is now these things that we're deploying have a specific purpose. So we've got a front-end service. This is the only, so between this and this, the only thing that changes in this diagram is the bottom, this versus this. I feel like I'm a eye doctor, which is better. All right. And so today's lab is this lab here. Let's find it. Let's see, copy link. I'll put it in the chat. If, uh, also I will put it in the Quick Labs Help channel. It's, uh, it's for Slack, just so you guys, if you want to look up it later. And then I will stop presenting here. And I will pull the lab up over on this other page, which is this page. And it should be this. All right. And we'll just burn through this real quick. And I'm going to copy this lab and put it over here for my reference. All right. I know I'll need a console. And the only thing I will slide down to here that I know from the boilerplate that we need to do is to set the default region. That's setting that your compute engine, anytime, if you don't spec, you don't have to specify the region, it'll automatically use that region. And then we're going to go down here to clone the source repository. I assume you guys are following along. So like, if we, you get a problem, you, I can stop sharing the screen and you can share the screen to, and we can see what your problem is and how to resolve it.
Okay.
Are you doing okay, Laverne?
Yes.
How about you, Jim? You doing okay? All right, very good. I can't remember the Indian lady's name who was here, uh, last week. And a couple of times before, I thought, I would see her today. I'm disappointed we didn't see her. All right. So we got that part going. And clone the repository and do the setup.sh. Did that, that did set up.sh. Okay, good. Create a GKE cluster. Services enable container. Uh, googleapiis.com. So you get the API, the, one of those quiz questions was, they had the API in the syntax. You don't need it because it's literally googleapiis.com. Creating the cluster. There it's container, not containers. Um, when you're creating the cluster, that's a G-Cloud command. But I think when you scale it later, it was a Kube Control command, which is kind of interesting. Uh, while that's burning, I'll give you a free quiz or a free thing you can lock, you can get from Udemy. Looking through some other links here. I'm waiting. Uh, pity, there was a free other class that is gone. Okay, he is finished. Let's see what the next step is. We created the cluster. Uh, look at the, this is a G-Cloud command for compute instances. It'll list the three that we created. Check my progress. And then we're going to deploy it. Okay, that completed. All right, get service on with. Choose your external port. There it's pending. All right, once you've determined, then we can do this. Okay? Here is a, while we're waiting, here's another free class on Udemy. Pardon me, it's not that link. It is this link here in chat is another free class while we're waiting for that to. Here's a free Azure link. All right, let's see if this guy's still running. Okay, so he's valid. Let's get the external port and test and see if it's there. Control. Proceed. Control V. That was an 80. Yep. So it's a very simple website. Come on, there we go. There we go. Migrate orders to a microservice. So before I hit it, he's using the G-Cloud Builds Tool, uh, that he's going to submit the build of this on, uh, the other guy. On the Azure thing, I'm not going to do that because I don't have time for that. Ah, here's something that's good. Hopefully this will work. This is the professional data engineer. See if that works for you. Waiting. Free, it's still free. That's good. That's the, from Dan Sullivan. That's good, since we got in there. Okay, that thing finished. All right. Yada, yada, yada. Run the following command to deploy your application. And it's finished. Let me go to the next step. So we created the deployment. It's just a get all. There. Expose it. Get the service. And here he's doing, like if you do this, that shows you all of them. And then if he just does this, that was the thing that we learned this week, specifying a particular pod. All right. I'm using nano to edit this file. Like this and replace. So he's called that service orders. Now it's going to be API orders. I wonder if that's I wonder if that's legitimate. Like that's API versus this is service. When the editor issues, look this, so the URL is changed. All right, we'll try that. This is valid. We're going to have to control V. Going to have to get the IP address that came out, and I did not save that IP address, so I'm going to go back. And do the previous command. I'm sure they said to to save that off, and I didn't. I'm going to do VI commands. There, hit my X. Control X, saves, yes. Save the file name. We did that. We're going to build it. Just for grand, just to make sure. I screwed this up. So do I need to delete these? How do you delete a line? Could have used VI. It was my mistake. Control X, yes. That was there, okay. Control V. That was literally out of the quiz. It's run build colon monolith. He's given it a name. Uh, here is a link to a Azure thing while we're waiting for that to build. All right. Go up here. Here is a Udemy class, which is also, I think a different one, which is a serverless Python thing. It's free. Slide back. The class. So we did, we did a run build. All right, and now we're going to submit this. Well, that's building. I'll look some more. And that's about it. Uh, for the stuff that I put over here. The, the one I put in there on ITSO, if I remember correctly, that was a company that Google bought. So that the ITs, ISTIO Kubernetes Service Mesh. So ma'am?
I didn't know they had bought that company.
What's that?
I didn't know they had bought that company?
Yeah, I think they did. I think they did. I put that up there, so I, and that was like an expensive one, but that, that URL does work.
Oh, that, okay, good. Yeah, I did some back research.
And then the certif solution architect one. Let me make sure I enroll in that. That is free indeed. It was like a hundred bucks or something. I, I do all these Udemy things and I seldom do the Udemy. I haven't even finished the ACE one, which is the one that we're supposed to be doing now. If I was just doing a lab while we were waiting for these things to complete, I would actually just, you know, turn the lab on and watch it for a bit. Right? So like when this could, well, that kube control command went very quickly. If it was just me, I'd just turn it on and watch it. Check our progress. Oh, come on. Please work. Like I, like this time, just to make sure I wasn't doing anything mistaken, I did not like, I didn't do any additional weird commands. And last week, we never got past that set image thing that I had a problem with. This is on, let's get the services. Google Cloud project. Does that, that should work. Echo. Just pull it as is. Control V. That shouldn't return my project. Whoops. I do have my project there, so why didn't this work? Okay, it does work. Okay, good. I was like, what? Here he's going to build the products of the, the other microservice. I think this is the third one. I would make sure you grab that one that's up there that says, uh, because it's got like an hour left. It's the, the one that is cloud professional data. This link here, this is Dan Sullivan. This is the official guide from Google. I just posted it again. Make sure you grab that, guys. If there were any that, you know, if I ever get the associate, the one that I will do next will be that one. And so we'll, you know, maybe start talking about that class, you know, next year, 10 years from now, if we ever get around to it. All right, so gcloud build submit on products. And so we got to create the deployment. And then expose. So in this case, there is no plurals here. Create and expose deployment, no plurals. The, he's using a pod. He's calling it the pod in both cases. Uh, I believe that's what that syntax is. I'm going to hit this, but let's just do this for a second. And say help here and see. Expose dash H. Let's see after, I know I'm like digressing, actually doing something that you're not supposed to, and this might screw up my command syntax, but let's see actually what they call that help related. Exposes a resource as a new Kubernetes service. So they literally, that, so a pod is a PO and a service is an SVC and a deployment is a deploy. So there's actually, it's not a pod. It's literally a service, a pod, a deployment, or a replica set. So this command here is literally products is a deployment. I imagine that's a deployment. That's a deployment. Once creating a deployment, one was exposing a deployment. And then he calls it a service instead of a deployment. Okay, all right. I need to learn this vernacular. Reconfigure monoliths. We'll use that in the next, we're going to use that one in the next thing. Let's remember that. Oops. Control X, copy. So he did a get services products. We need this external IP address. So let's copy that just to make sure. Okay, and then he's changing that. It's in the bottom one. Okay, so let me go ahead and start this. Oh man, I should have could have used VI. And then he's changing it to be like this. So this is the orders IP. No, that's right. I wish I would have done this with VI. Like this. Let me save it and then come back in because I don't know how to, I don't know how to use nano really. E D. Key. Search. A. A. And then this product URL is going to be changed. And just to maintain consistency. All right. So we did all that, did all that, and then we're going to do the build command again. It'll take a while. The nice thing about Udemy, which maybe a lot of things are not nice about Udemy, but the not, one nice thing is you can watch it on Apple TV. Udacity, you cannot do on Apple TV, and you cannot do it on your phone, which is kind of, kind of blows. Coursera and EDX, I don't think EDX you can do at all on Apple TV, and Coursera is kind of broken.
I have an Apple TV. I mean, I think that.
I like Apple TV.
I have, well, it may be the older one. I don't know if it still works. It was like one of those things I won at one of these, um, UDS.
Ah, cool. I bought one like a long time ago. I think it's the second gen. And then later I bought a third gen. And really, other than the remote, I don't have any difference between the second and the third one.
I think mine still works there. Yeah, I had a Chrome pass, so I, you know.
I, I like how Apple TV now, you can watch, uh, Amazon Prime on it. There for a while, you couldn't. And so I would watch Prime on my PlayStation, but now that you can do both, I never, I never really even use the PlayStation anymore. All right, so we did a build submit. Build submit. All right, groovy. All right, and this is so now in my browser, this should be updated. And we should be able to go to the products, and we can. Okay, groovy. Groovy. Oh my God, all I gotta do is do the front end. Okay, we're done. Another time consuming build. Now, what's interesting on this one, he just does npm run build. He doesn't do the npm run build colon whatever name. All right, so that's happened. Create a Docker container. What's he doing here? He's submitting the build with the builds tool. And, and I think what happens here is we're building something from node. And then the, the results from nodes, we were building on the build tool. It seems odd to me that we're doing that. It seems like you would just do that from the beginning. I, I don't know enough about, uh, you know, I don't know enough about node to know why we're not doing that. You know what I mean? If, if you've got Docker build or the, you know, this, this gcloud build tool, why are, why are we just not doing everything with it? Why do we build it locally and then build it on the cloud?
Hmm, I don't know. It's a good question.
Yeah, other than I see like here, he's like building a Docker versus the other one was just a node command. Couldn't he have put that in his syntax or something? I don't know enough about Docker, don't know enough about node. Or npm. That was the create deployment. Expose the deployment. I wonder why this one didn't have something that we would do for the, uh, so have we exposed it? We've exposed it. Let's go back to the fancy store, and all of this was having. I mean, is this, is this any different? This is 3522. 3522 was the thing. Go back and see if we can't find the command. And get service, list all the stuff. 30, 35238. So it ends in 122. So this is a different URL. Okay, so let's grab that URL. And we'll pull that up over here and see what we see different. Products. So to be honest with you, I don't understand what this one is different versus this one. That's just me. But it is there. And it works. All right, and just, you know, this is just testing and deleting. So before I end this lab, do you guys need any help on yours? Because I'm, once I end this, I can't use it as a reference.
Yeah.
I'll be okay. It was similar last week I got through. This one is just slow.
All right, well, I will do this. I never went back and redid the thing that failed last week. This is literally the, the only time I've done any quick labs. So this one, I, I still haven't gone back and completed. We, uh, we actually, you know, we, we took a long time in the middle of the agenda, but we did, uh, end it at the we did, we did complete everything we set out to do. Is there anything we want to talk about before we end it?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Well, I will stop recording.